Good evening and welcome to Spokane City Council's Legislative Agenda Meeting. We will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes, as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you call the roll, Ms. Fister?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Sapon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarette.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We have poetry at the podium, which was originally created in 2019 by Spokane poet laureate Mark Anderson, along with Spokane Arts, to give local poets and poetry enthusiasts the opportunity to make their voices heard at council meetings in a unique and artful way. This opportunity reminds our community that poetry can play an important part in the civic realm. Tonight, we have Paul Lindhoth reading Directive. Paul, welcome.
Hello. I'm a professor at E W U, and this poem was written for the debut of my 2018 book, The Spokane River. Mine is a line of people who talk to animals, who believe animals can understand them. Your kinfolk might think likewise. My kin rally yelps, squawks, and croons from elk and coyotes, turkeys and owls. I do a decent turkey gobble myself. Flow on, you animal talkers, you bird whisperers, flow on. You already speak to pets and no one asks if they can hear you. We mammals grow bones in our heads to transmit sound, the hammer, the anvil, the stirrup. Speaking to other species makes healthy sense in the head. Gobble on, you talkers and squackers, ride your words downwind, downstream. In the spirit of the Spokane River, I urge you to babble to wildlife. Not only can they hear you, they will talk back if you learn their speech. Whistle to myrmets in rocks beside the stream. At first, they might fear you're a fiend out to eat them. They might dive for their lairs. No matter, let the air bear you, carry you. Don't stop there. Open yourself like some Saint Francis to inanimate beings. Address the trees, the stones, the water. Loft your lowly language to the wind, even if people on cliffs above the river take you for a madman, a madwoman, even if you come away drenched from the sheets of spray. Use your words to channel the water. Use your language to divide the silver like a seam. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Paul. Do we have any public comment?
On boards and commissioners.
We have one comment on board appointment for Mr. Kit Parker, and that would be Justin Holler.
I don't see him.
I don't see him at this time.
Justin, nobody in line.
Okay, nobody in line. Thank you. Onto the consent agenda. Any public comment on the consent? Oh, let's take a motion on the board appointment. This is for Mr. Kit for the Sustainability, Climate Resilience, and Sustainability Board. Any council commentary? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstention? Welcome, Mr. Parker. Now, onto the consent agenda. We have two public comments on the consent agenda. One is Will Hewlings, and then Justin Holler. Welcome, Will.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown Spokane. I strongly support OPR 2024-1073, the Spokane Police Department's request to accept $90,000 grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce for the Organized Retail Theft Pilot Program. As someone who lives and experiences the heart of Spokane daily, I have seen firsthand the devastating effects of organized retail theft on our businesses, community, and safety. One stark example was the closure of Downtown Rite Aid on December 6, 2023, almost a little over a year ago. While the company was undergoing bankruptcy, the local store manager shared another alarming reason for the closure, over $400,000 in losses from shoplifting. This theft didn't just harm Rite Aid, it impacted people like me that live downtown, people that work downtown, like yourselves. It impacted all of us who depended on that store for convenient access to essentials. Now I gotta go halfway across the town just to buy toilet paper. Fast forward to 2024, and the downtown Nike store has become a magnet for organized retail theft. Brazen thieves enter and grab thousands of dollars in merchandise and leave without fearing consequences. Then they take this stuff and they sell it by where I live, the Ridpath, because there's people selling drugs there that they trade. And so then they use these stolen goods to fund drug habits, often trading items for fentanyl right in front of or inside the Ridpath building. This activity doesn't just harm Nike or its employees, it undermines the safety and livability of downtown Spokane for everyone. This $90,000 grant provides a unique opportunity to address this problem. And as I said, my time's about to run out, but Foot Patrols, this money would be excellent. Foot Patrols Downtown Spokane. Kevin Hall, Foot Patrols Downtown Spokane. You have some money now, you can do that.
Thank you. Justin Holler?
Hello. I think it was James Dean, or affectionately Dino, that said, "Baby, it's cold outside." Oh, that song's canceled, never mind.
That's Mariah Carey.
My name's Justin Holler, and I live in District 1. And the $90,000 for a pilot program, it seems like all of a sudden somebody cares about retail theft. But nobody seemed to care when Nike was being looted, and the Proud Boys, whether you like them or you don't like them, they were trying to help things. And Brian Beggs was like, "No, no, 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 no. We can't have people helping. That would be wrong and bad." And it's come to the point where a lot of my friends and business owners are really contemplating vigilanteism because of the crime and filth in this town. And it's frustrating when most of my friends, who are either veterans, or business owners, or both, that show up to coffee on Friday, and you're all invited, by the way, don't want to call Crime Check or 911 anymore. They're like, "You know what? We'll just handle it ourselves." How sad a state of affairs is that? I don't know what you're gonna do with this 90 grand, if it's gonna evaporate and be given to the homeless immediately. But it's just, it's very telling of, "Oh, now we care. Oh, now we're gonna do something." You know, you wouldn't help Nadine. It was five to two on just about everything, and Nadine couldn't get anything pushed through, good, bad, or indifferent idea. And then some people in this room, wearing black shirts and a colorful tie, said, "Nadine, bad. Conservative, bad. Five to two, but it's all your fault." And it's very frustrating when someone consistently says it's your fault when it's a five to two vote on just about everything, logical, insane, and fiscally conservative. I hope you do something good with the money, but I'm not hopeful. It would be nice, and I'd like to see more transparency, much like 02, 03, and I think 012. There's no transparency. There's no outlines with the money. I would like to see more transparency, more outlines. And it's just frustrating to just have a blanket amount. And then what happens after that pilot program's up? Are you gonna refund it, or are you just gonna go, "Oh, no, we didn't like that, because it held people accountable"? You know, it's just, 90 grand is a drop in the bucket compared to what you could be spending on police instead of homeless. And we have the least amount of police protection per capita of a lot of cities out there. And having police would solve the problems of a lot of retail theft, like Will said.
Thank you, Justin. Your time is up.
More street cops.
Thank you. Any council commentary on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstention? The consent agenda is passed. Ms. Fister?
Ordinance C 36625 relating to the County and Grants Department amending Section 3.01 8.215 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
We have one public comment. Christine Schuler. Christine?
Hello. My legal name is Christine Schuler. My real name is Seven. I want to talk about this. You know, you didn't say why in the agenda, all the paperwork that goes with it, the wherashes, all the fine print, the underlines, the crosses out. Okay, you're changing the title to take the word "grants" out of the title for the director. And so, but it doesn't say why. It says that the staff is gonna write the grants, but it doesn't say why. So people have to guess, come to theories. It's not proper that you're not saying why. When you talk about accountability, that's right where it belongs, is saying why. Why are you doing this? You know, two theories are, either you're gonna hire a director that doesn't know how to write grants, didn't learn how, you want nepotism, organized crime, all that kind of stuff. You know, let's hire a director that doesn't know how to write grants. Therefore, we're gonna change the law that says, "Yeah, you don't have to write grants. We're gonna have staff do it for you." Is that why? Or are you maybe having so many grants need to be written that you're hiring more people? Or you're planning to hire more people? Because you don't say why. And if you want to improve accountability and transparency and all that, have people understand why you're doing things, then that's a great place to have put that. Explain why you're taking that out of the title.
Thank you, Christine. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance C 36627 relating to the small works roster, amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 7.06.165 and repealing Spokane Municipal Code Section 7.06.167.
We have one public comment. Christine Schuler?
Hello. Again, my legal name is Christine Schuler. My real name is Seven. On this one, I see that what you're doing is you're raising the maximum, or the minimum, whichever. You're raising the amount, the maximum amount, to get into that category. Instead of being $300,000, you're upping it to $350,000. Obviously, the reason why is inflation. You know, I don't know if you explained it in there, but it's clear and obvious why that would have to happen. Inflation. All these businesses that put in bids to do these things, you know, inflation has hit all of the businesses. Every time minimum wage goes up, everything goes up. Every time you raise another fee, another tax, services, all this kind of stuff that you put in there means that everything, it's inflation. Everything costs more. So now you have to change that limit from $300,000 to $350,000, you know. And unfortunately, you just, you know, this wouldn't have to happen if you guys kept inflation down. If you didn't tax everybody and cause inflation, you wouldn't have to do that. You know, Social Security, the bottom, SSI, Social Security, is going up $3 for 2025. $3 is how much it's going up. And you guys have to up that, $50,000. And all this trickle-down stuff, the person on Social Security fixed income is gonna get $3 more, while, you know, you see, which is never gonna make it with this inflation. It's never gonna make it. So you need to stop doing things that'll cause you to have to do on this bill.
Thank you. Any council commentary? All right, seeing none, prepare to vote.
Aye.
Ordinance C 36628 relating to Spokane City Council meetings and amending Sections 2.005.010, 2.01.010, and 0.030 of the Spokane Municipal Code and repealing Section 2.01.020 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
Great. Before we have public testimony, I'm gonna have Mr. Wright kind of go over this and give a better understanding for everyone.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, this ordinance, when it first hit the agenda, followed the council rule, proposed changes that included a potential meeting date of Tuesday. When it was clear that the council was not going to go back to, or change the meeting date, the ordinance was amended to keep the Monday meeting date. Some of the other technical changes in the ordinance were, actually, they're really more than technical. They clarified that public testimony will be allowed at committees, took out some of the excess committee language that was in the code and belongs more in council rules. And it also has provision deleting SMC 0201020, which is a requirement that agendas be published 10 days in advance. That's an old provision that we couldn't quite figure out why it was in there, but under our current rules, there's gonna be agendas quite in advance of 10 days, far more than 10 days. So I don't see any harm to the public in lack of notice by repealing that provision.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wright. We have three public comments. First is Barry Barfield, then Will Hewlings, and then Justin Holler. Welcome, Barry.
Good evening. I'm Barry Barfield. I so appreciate each one of you and what you do. Like, this particular change, I think, allows for more public comment. I think that's one of the intentions of it. And these minutes are minutes you never get back in your life. You hear so much, and I know some of it is extremely helpful. I mean, I think the intent for public comment is that you'll get input that really can help the city and help in your deliberations. But I think part of it is you put up with a lot of other comment that, "Oh, no, I shouldn't make a val-" Who knows? Who knows if the comment is valuable or not? But you listen, and I really, really appreciate that. So, yeah, I'm in favor of it. And just in closing, I would ask that you be mindful of our mothers and fathers, our brothers and sisters, our sons and daughters who are out there on the street tonight. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Will? And then after Will, Justin?
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown Spokane. So I want to express my support for the revised ordinance C 36628, which makes technical amendments to Spokane Municipal Code. Mr. Wright read this pretty much what I have written here. But one key change in this ordinance is the revision of the Spokane Municipal Code to expressly allow public testimony at committee meetings. This is a significant improvement that expands the public's opportunity to weigh in on legislation before it comes to a final vote. Allowing public testimony at the committee level empowers community members to share their perspectives earlier in the process when adjustments can still be made. This change benefits all members of our community, including those who have historically been marginalized by providing a platform for their voices to be heard. Section 02.005.010 now clarifies that standing committee meetings are open to public. I just read that. Additionally, I appreciate the clarification in Section 02.01.010 regarding the time and place of regular legislative meetings. Setting a consistent schedule and process ensures that the public knows when and where to engage with their elected officials. While I still have reservations about some of the ceremonial components of these meetings, such as land acknowledgements and poetry readings, I'm glad the council has chosen to focus on practical and meaningful reforms with this ordinance. As someone who has long advocated for transparency and accountability in local government, I am pleased to see these changes. They signal a commitment to improving how the council interacts with its constituents, the people that voted for you guys. I hope that this update will result in more robust public engagement and better-informed decision-making. While there are still areas where I think improvement can be made, I commend the council for taking this step to fix some of these longstanding issues and not to just go and change stuff, like the times and dates. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Will. Justin?
Still Justin Holler, District 1. I've been coming to state council meetings long enough to remember when public open forum was three minutes, and Lori Kinnear and several other members wanted to limit that to two minutes. And you could barely get an idea across in two to three minutes. It's really difficult. You have to rapid fire and have to be really focused. And there have been a lot of changes. And to shove open forum to the back, it seems like you don't want to hear from your constituents. And to limit to two minutes instead of three, seems like, again, you want to limit your constituents, and you want to make them miss dinner? Or you want to silence them by making them wait through all the rest of it? And I was here when someone who got appointed to a board, ironically, helped to shut down a city council meeting. And you guys allowed someone who shut down a city council meeting to have an appointment. And that's baffling to me, that someone who is that volatile, and this is coming from me, okay, that volatile, to bring all these people here and to shut down a city council meeting, and you award that bad behavior by giving him an appointment? I don't get that. That seems very counterproductive and counterintuitive. I'd like to see things the way they are, maybe improve, maybe have two minutes and 30 seconds for open forum, or bring it back to three minutes. But I appreciate the fact that you're actually gonna leave it on Mondays, because it's been that way for, what, 65 and a half years, I think? So why change it now unless you're trying to shut up someone in District 1 who can't be there? You know, that seemed like an agenda. And I don't like these so-called hidden agendas that are pretty blatant and obvious to anyone who's even mildly paying attention. It's very frustrating that you won't allow two people to win at anything, and then you blame them when the five predominantly vote against the two. It's very frustrating to see.
Thank you, Justin. Any council commentary? First of all, I'd like to give a, Councilmember Bingle has his hand up.
Yeah, so I want to praise this ordinance. Yeah, so I, I want to, to praise this ordinance. I know that last week we had a, a different set of rules that were, that were proposed that were coming forward that ended up getting fixed, and we don't need to talk about those. But I do just want to highlight the fact that, again, different council members on this particular council have worked to increase public participation and increase public transparency and getting documents and getting knowledge out before what it had been. And for all the areas that I, that I criticized, the majority, for all the areas that sometimes I can get a little spicy, I do want to say that the direction we're heading now, I think, is really good. I think some good things came out of this, allowing testimony at retreat or at committee. I don't remember who proposed that specifically, but that is a fantastic idea because, like somebody had said, you know, maybe it was Barry, but typically when, when testimony comes at the, the moment of the vote, you know, we've, we've kind of already discussed and debated, and the mind is made up. But allowing testimony at committee, I think, gives an opportunity for public testimony to really potentially shape the way that we as council members see something. And so I think that's a really positive development for us as a city and as a city council, and I hope it demonstrates that, you know, on the council that there is an interest in hearing from the public. And I think the way that we saw the change of rules last week to not implement some of the changes, again, shows how public comment and public testimony can shape our opinion and can help us to move in a positive direction. I think us getting things out earlier, which, again, I know I've praised Councilman Klitsky for this a number of times, but getting things out more early and trying to show the different versions and things like that, I think, I think this is a really good move, and I'm, I'm thankful for all the ideas that different council members have proposed to bring us forward as a council. I think these are really positive steps, and so to that, I say kudos to the folks who worked on this, kudos to Mr. Wright, to Jacoby, to all the LAs, everybody who was working on this. Again, I think this is a, a step forward for us as a city, and I think it's, I think it's good, good luck. I'm excited to, to support it tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I'll echo a lot of that. I think having testimony at the beginning of committees really is a fantastic way to get front and center as legislation is first proposed. I think you are going to see a lot of positive impact for that as we go through the process. It is an overall net gain in the time that there will be for public feedback and engagement. And I see this, I, yeah, I really agree with Councilmember Bingle, is a really positive step and kind of a new direction, and wanting to engage more. Commend Councilmember Klitsky for, her work really started since she came into office to have more of a notification for agendas and policies and get that out in time for, for public feedback. And I think last Monday showed a lot of deliberation and collaboration, and really hopeful for 2025.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Zepung?
Yeah, I'll just add as a reminder, folks, that even if you can't come down and testify at committee, which it doesn't work for everyone, just like Monday nights don't work for everyone, you do have the opportunity to write in and send an email to testimony@spokanecity.org. Is that right? So send those emails, all that information that needs to be submitted.
The Wednesday before council consideration of the item, so Wednesday before the Monday.
And we'll have that included in the packet. So, yeah, I'm really proud of this as our most transparent and inclusive way to get the public involved in our, in our processes and a way for us to hear from you all. So I'm really proud to be supporting this.
Councilmember Klitsky?
Yeah, I do want to thank my fellow council members for accepting these changes and moving forward with them, and I appreciate the acknowledgement. I did also want to mention, we are moving the dates that amendments are due forward so that folks can review our amendments before we're voting on them, too. I know that's been a nuisance for everybody when they try to testify, and we already have amendments about the thing that they're testifying on. So I hope that helps. Those are due on Wednesdays as well, so you should be able to see them on, by Thursday before the next meeting.
Great. Well, I'll just echo what's been said. Thank you, everyone. And just for the public, councils sometimes had a difficult time keeping up with amendments as well. They'd be at the bottom of the ninth, and to read and to process and to vote on those was, it was good, but maybe wasn't always the best outcome. Again, another kudos to Mr. Wright and Mr. Bird for all their behind-the-scenes work and taking all seven council members' comments and trying to deliver a product that we could all agree on. We just thank them for that. If there's no more commentary, let's prepare to vote.
Aye.
Oh. Oh. He just said aye. Thank you. That concludes our legislative agenda. We're now going to open forum. Please direct all your comments to the chair. You have two minutes, and we're going to start with Barry Barfield, and then Sunshine, and then Will.
I'll be brief, so you guys can get home a minute or two earlier. Again, I really appreciate your work. Hope you'll be mindful of the folks that are out there that are homeless. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Barry. Sunshine?
Sunshine Wiggins, Spokane. Mayor says she has public safety in our best interest, and then she cut the funding for the, most of the funding for that cops program, the neighborhood cop program, and then she bumped up the cops in the downtown. 801 citations for pedestrian interference, up from 321 last year. The bulk of these handed out between May and August, 502 to be exact, the bulk of these, of these homeless people. So 8,792 arrests in this year. Police made contact with 143 people over four weeks who had 2,192 prior local arrests. But half of the arrests recorded, like, the, were repeat offenders, like, on our 71 people list, were only 22 of those. So most of those were homeless people that got those citations. My whole point being is homelessness sells. This is a great tax revenue for our mayor, you know? Just hand out a citation, let's make money off them, you know? So am I your new citation? Is that, is that what it is? I could go on about more and more of it, but when, when it really comes down to it, you guys are selling the, the idea of homelessness, instead of, you're treating us like a citation instead of a person when you're doing this. 22 of those were our repeat offenders, criminals. So, I mean, my number one, I want success. So my number one referral is to the dignity work program through WorkSource. It works, and it is spreading like a wildfire now that us homeless know about it. A lot of us didn't even know it existed. Our number two referral is for the ID program. I have to have both of those hand in hand. They deserve to work, they need to work, we're not a citation. We are part of this society.
Appreciate it. Will, could you let me just see if Tanya's out there? She was, had a ride. Did she leave?
She had to go.
She had to go? All right, thank you. Come on down, Will. Thanks.
My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown Spokane. I really appreciate it hearing some of them statistics, but I'm going to speak about the same thing I speak about every time, pretty much. I want to express my anger and frustration over the ongoing crisis with homeless drug addicts littering the sidewalk along, around the rid path and openly using deadly drugs in public. It's beyond acceptable, and it's infuriating. Just the other day, I noticed a spot on the sidewalk between the rid path and the satellite diner where drug addicts openly smoke meth out of pipes and fentanyl off of foil. When they're done, they discard their used foil right on the sidewalk. If you look closely, you'll see aluminum foil melted and stuck to the pavement, so bad that it would require tools to scrape it off. This is the type of filth that not just embar- that's not just embarrassing, but disgraceful for our city. Where is the downtown Spokane partnership clean team in the city of Spokane? Why aren't these cleaning, why aren't they cleaning up these sidewalks? And more importantly, where is the enforcement of our laws? Does anyone honestly think Lisa Brown would tolerate this kind of open drug use and pollution in her pristine Kendall Yards neighborhood? I, who does she think she is? She walks from here, City Hall, to her little nice fancy neighborhood, while just blocks away, my part in the neighborhood, it's frickin' overrun with drug addicts and zombies and criminals? Something needs to be done, Betsy. Kevin Hall, thank you.
Thank you, Will. Christine Schuler, and then Jose Alvarez?
My legal name is Christine Schuler. My real name is Seven. I live in Spokane, District Cathcart and Bingle. You know, Spokane is very corrupt, organized crime. It's just, you know, you guys have been acting like a big fish in a small pond and forgetting that it's national, and so I'm just going to warn you here that it's going to be going national and embarrass Spokane. I've told you that the federal agents are here investigating corruption in Spokane. Last summer, it was August 2023, the federal, the FBI instructed me to call the police, Sheriff Midell's office, ask for an honest police officer, and report that I had been receiving death threats to provide the evidence because I was a candidate for governor. I signed up to be a candidate for governor, first for speaking therapy, utilize the politics I've learned. And I did that. I followed the FBI's instructions, and within just a few hours, well, it was a couple days later, the county sent a phone call, a county law enforcement officer, and so I told her, I'm a candidate for governor, I was death threatened. Within a few hours, the police in psych jail crew was at my apartment to assault me and legally demand, or it's illegal, but they pretend it's legal, to, to demand that I stay away from politics, that I not be a candidate for governor. This is, this is police officers and organized crime, Catholic charities, city council members that are using the laws as political weapons, and it's very illegal. And most of the country knows that you can't haul your political opponents off to psych jail because they're not the same politics as you. Did you guys do that to your opponents?
Thank you, Christine. Your time is up. Jose?
Good evening, Council President, council members. My name is Jose Alvarez. I'm a clinical mental health therapist and case manager on Nuchas Reyes Community Center, District Two, East Central Neighborhood. First of all, I want to thank you guys for all the work that you do for our community and everything that you guys provide. Nuchas Reyes has many services that we provide to our community, such as economic developmental programs, student engagement programs, family connections, and free soccer team, food pantry, and more with bilingual professionals in these areas. Today, however, I would like to shine the light on our mental health program Esperanza. Our mental health program consists of two licensed clinicians with a wide range of experience and expertise in mental health. The clinicians facilitate open men and women's support group, where these men and women can open up in a secure, safe space where it's confidential to express their emotions. Our Esperanza program has provided over 120 hours of peer counseling. Peer counseling has shined the light on the need of therapy for men, women, family and children, Spanish-speaking family and children. As of March of 2024, our Esperanza program has provided over 70 hours to individual, individual therapy to men, women, and children, all in Spanish. We have launched our capital campaign for our behavioral health building. We already have the service, which just needs bigger space to house these services. We are a serious and professional agency, and we hope that you can continue to support our financial, financially, as we are trying to bridge the gap between committee members and the city. We have been persistent about our in-house services, but also resilient in the lack of funding. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Next, we have Justin Haller, and then we have Kelly Cruz.
I, my name's Justin Haller, District One. I was going to express myself through interpretive dance tonight, because I feel like you guys don't listen, but I won't, I won't do that to you. But I would like to play part of the Declaration of Independence, if that's okay, because I think that that is important. Is that, is that against the rules?
You just probably need to read it, Justin, not play it. Could you read it?
I could barely read my own writing. I'll, I'll pivot. I, I echo a lot of the things that Will says because I live downtown also. I, I got out, and it's very frustrating to have to move to a different neighborhood because people are attacking you, and you don't seem to have anyone having your back, like Lori Kinnear or Brian Beggs, back when District Two was part of downtown. And now the District One has downtown's problems. Once I escape downtown, my representatives have to deal with that. And it's very frustrating to have a district map change at the behest of somebody who doesn't care about District One at all and wants to silence them at any given point. I'll, I'll leave with this. Sympathy of Destruction, Megadeth. You take a mortal man, you put him in control, watch him become a god, watch people's heads roll, like the Pied Piper led-
Justin, your time is up.
Led through the streets, dance like marionettes, swaying to the Symphony of Destruction.
Thank you. Kelly?
Good evening, Council President, council members. I'm here tonight, my name's Kelly Cruz. I'm Board Treasurer for Spokane Cops. I'm here tonight because there's some discrepancy in the extension that you approved for us and, and what the city is telling us. And I'll just point out from your own resolution, be it further resolved, that if the mayor or authorized destiny has not signed an extension of cops agreement on the following terms by December 10, 2024 at 3:00 p.m., then pursuant to section 38 of the Spokane City Charter, the city council president is authorized to sign an extension on the same terms and conditions. I bring that up because I've provided you packets of both the old and current proposal. If you look under the, the one that says current, the contract and stuff there, look at the second page, Lisa Brown's signature is on the 13th of December, which means she didn't meet that December 10 deadline. So now it falls on the council president to deal with the extension of the contract. The other thing that I'd like to point out is that in the front page of that, it listed an improper address for our admin office because they copied it off the old contract and we moved since then. So that address needs to be updated. And we also, as a board, would like clarification on the reimbursement schedule and the amount to be reimbursed. It's very ambiguous. It says up to $225,000 monthly, but that could mean you give us 50 bucks, you know, out of that, and at the end you decide. We have a budget, we work with shadow, shadow accountants, we have for over 20 years. We're, I believe, having our directors having a meeting with procurement people tomorrow at the city, but even if we weren't a nonprofit, if we were a business, we have to have some conclusive payment schedule and an amount as to what's going to be paid, because we can't plan forward till March 31 under this extension. So without Ms. Wilkerson, I'm happy to sit down with our director and you and work out what we can do. If it becomes a deadline that goes past the end of the year, maybe the first meeting of the city council, we can work with you on that, but that language needs to be clarified and cleaned up. We have our board meeting on Wednesday, and I'm telling our director and the rest of the board that we should not enter into this agreement on this contract till those items are cleared up with the city. So I look forward to working with you going forward. Thank you.
Kelly, thank you. That concludes our open forum for this evening. I'd like to thank everyone for the year of 2024. Please note that we will not have our next council meeting till January 6 of 2025, and this council wishes you the- and this council wishes you the merriest of holidays. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved to second, all of the favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Merry Christmas, God bless.
Right back at you, Councilmember Bingo.